Thirty. Well, this workshop session to order and the primary reason we're here today is to hear from our D E S team. I'm down and then I'll ask you to introduce your your team Bob, but you just want to say at the outset, I I applaud you, your team, for bringing this forward. While you don't have the authority to create such a new agreement, I think it's your job to continue to look for. Still, some some thoughts from my experience, forty years of well spent and Good Samaritan Hospital is that. Well, spend initiative is always find a better way. You should always be looking for opportunities to improve what we're doing. And in this case, it's not maybe necessarily improving the process, but improving the 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 strength of the of the services we provide. And that's why when I compare and look at all emergency service, police, fire, ambulance and hazmat. We're looking at dwindling resources, expensive resources, and if we can find a way to to do it better and minimize any downside risk, that's that's what we're looking to do. And so I again applaud you for bringing it forward and have the opportunity to discuss it at a high level here. And I I the other thing I wanted to say about well span is we at ten years ago became part of a merged health system. And while I don't like every single aspect of it, the things I don't like are we're so big, it's hard to even know to who to pick up the phone and call some days that we have twenty five thousand employees throughout the whole system. And but when I boil it down to our mission and the care that we provide, we are able to do it much better. And quite frankly, we as a solo hospital may not have survived COVID without being part of a larger system. And so I I look back and again, our our ability to do things proactively is ten times better than it used to be. We were very limited and now we're doing a lot more in the community proactively to to keep people healthy. So I think that there's a lot of similarities between the two. So turn it over to you, Bob. We want to introduce your team and and then.
Certainly forward. I am Bob Dowd, Director at the Department of Emergency Services. And to my right, I have Deputy Director of Emergency Management, Gary Verna. My left, I have Special Operations Chief Jason Leibel. We're here this morning, this afternoon. So so.
Morning.
Should I say this morning? Yeah. It's afternoon to talk about this agreement and, you know, seek feedback from the board and also make sure that what we draft as a next step aligns with the board's desires. You know, if I I probably should have titled this at the very top as mutually beneficial to your point. Anything we do is going to benefit Lebanon County as well as Lancaster, but anything we do needs to benefit Lebanon County and that that is the theme of the agreement here. And not only benefit us, but protect us. We're talking about structuring this in such a way that we're very well protected from both a, you know, degradation of services standpoint and from a financial burden standpoint.
Just to clarify upfront too, we're only talking about hazmat services.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, this is just for hazmat. And Pennsylvania Act one sixty five requires that each county have a designated hazmat team. Lancaster reached out to us and asked if we would be willing to serve that role for them. And that's what this conversation is all about. So a couple of key points.
Bob, before you go go into that, we want to talk just in general for the public sake, is you what are the types, what are the most common types of things that you're responding to from a hazmat standpoint, types of things that happen?
That's a question best answered by you. Diesel fuel spills is probably or not probably, that is number one instance that we respond to tractor trailer accidents with their saddle tanks leaking the fuel. Generally, anything over forty five gallons is considered affecting forty five gallons is considered a hazmat incident. If it's being released uncontrollably, especially if it hits the soil or a waterway or has any chance of having a hazard towards the public. But yeah, that's the number one.
Is it true too that that your job is primarily to contain it, you know, that you bring in somebody else then to clean it up?
Right, right. So we contain it. We the emergency aspect of it, we're not a cleanup company. They contract the responsible party or who's involved contracts cleanup company come out and mitigate the soil. You might drive down eighty one and see plastic down on the the median of the highway. That's the cleanup company that's taking processes of mitigating that contaminated soil and replacing it and replanning the grass. That's not us. That's not our purview. Our purview strictly the emergency response aspect. And that would be the same for Lancaster County. That's
Yeah.
Once the emergency is handled, once the the leak is stopped and, you know, any we mitigate any further risk to the public. D E P, if I remember wrong, D E P normally handles everything after that as far as making sure that's cleaned up correctly and reporting processes and soil testing later on if necessary.
Go ahead.
Yeah. May I ask, Gary, is this something that has changed? It seems to me when we, I don't know if it was when we established hazmat or got the garage from the city over here. But it was something about that you don't want to wait for the cleanup crews to come. You want to get there first. And that's why we had to have a hazmat team. Has that changed?
Can't speak to that because that was way before my time as far as why they needed a garage other than the equipment that they had needs or that we have needs a garage to sit in a garage and not out in the open. Nineteen ninety was when it was required for established by law, both federal and state law that requires the establishment of hazmat teams or the ability for the counties to have a a an emergency response hazmat team.
Okay.
Nothing's changed with that. That's been every county in the Commonwealth is required to have some type of hazmat services, whether a county team or a contracted team.
Okay.
It has been proven throughout the state that in the populated areas, it's very beneficial to have county teams or 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 those teams that are are covering that specific area. There's places up north where there's a contract company that's covering something like Jason Beetletoe in twelve counties.
Eighteen.
Eighteen counties, which is just insane, but it's population based also. Like that's the population up there is far less than what it is down here, far less far less busier than it is down here in our area of the state.
If you have those, the names of those counties, not now, but I'd appreciate a list of those. Because I told that Bob, I'm rather visual. And so I started a map and the Southwest has a large number of counties. But Clarion, I think some had it on, some didn't. And I don't know if that's a recent departure.
There's a list on Pima's website, but I'll most certainly get that for you.
Okay.
That's easily accessible by anybody.
Okay.
But I will I will get that for you.
All right. All right. I'd I'd just like to finish. If there's no visual map, I'd like to finish that. It helps me to understand.
There's a visual map.
Okay.
So on Pima's website.
Okay.
But I'll 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 get it for you within the next few days and.
Okay. That's one of the things I asked for from day one.
But as far as correcting priority is in responses, you still want to get there first because it doesn't make sense to start cleaning up anything until you stop it and or contain it.
Yes. State law requires two hours from the time you're notified to be on scene. By having teams like ours where they're either government or or very close to it, we provide a much higher level of service. We are never, that never takes us more than a few, a few minutes to get out the door. And then travel time is very obvious. So we're always well with under well under the state required minimum and providing a much better service. And you have geographic geography in those northern areas that would be a long wait. Any other questions before I move on to just? So some of the key points that I want to want to talk about that we're trying to structure into this draft agreement. It's a one year term that would auto renew for four additional one year terms for total of five years. Ninety day exit clause, talking about protecting Lebanon County. For some reason, we determined that this isn't working or that we can't provide the level of service that that we promised. We need to make sure we're well protected and a ninety day kind of no questions asked exit clause will be included. And Lancaster understands our position and they respect that. Lancaster County has a hazmat station that's county owned. And they have a whole bunch of equipment that's either task force or county owned that stayed when their contractor vacated. All of that equipment, they're going to allow us to use with the intent of basically setting that station up as a substation in Lancaster County. They will take on the financial burden of maintaining all of that. But it provides a remote location as we are able to onboard responders from Lancaster County. They can go there. That also benefits Lebanon County where now if there's a big incident happening with us, we've got Lancaster based responders getting additional coming to help us. So that mutually beneficial piece really comes into play here. Lebanon County will handle all the invoicing for all the calls in Lancaster County. We operate based off of billing for services and we operate on a eight county task force regional rate schedule. That's been in place for as long as the task force has been in place as far as I know.
Yeah, that doesn't change.
Yeah, that doesn't change. Lancaster County is one of our task force counties. So business as usual there. Lancaster County DPS, which is the D E S equivalent of Lancaster County. Their employees are going to participate on the team with us, which gives us additional paid people that will both respond to Lebanon County calls and help us in Lancaster County. So a call that happens in Lancaster County frequently is a duty officer only call where you just go out, say, yep, this is what needs to happen. Here's the phone numbers to call. Let's know if you need anything else. A lot of times that will be handled by Lancaster County employee. Operating underneath our Lebanon County hazmat umbrella, but it won't require any actual physical resources coming from Lebanon County.
I do have a question on that one. Are the commissioners paying for this team? From Lancaster County, whoever's.
No, no. The DPS employees from Lancaster?
Yes.
No, no, they're employees of Lancaster County. Lancaster County pays them.
So the commissioners are Lancaster County.
Are we talking about this board or I'm sorry, I'm not following.
In Lancaster County, are the commissioners in their budget paying for the employees that are coming here?
Yes.
Their commissioner's not aware of that unless I had a conversation with her. And that's why that's one of the biggest confusions that I have.
I don't. I have not spoken to their board. I operate through my counterpart down there. I will bring that to his attention.
Yeah, because I asked her like two times, three times. I said, are you sure you're not paying for people to be part of our team? And, you know, and respond. And she said, no. And I'm like, that's not my understanding. So there is some confusion and we have to make sure all the commissioners on both counties are on the same page.
And at this point, we're still operating mutual aid. So all this being built into the agreement. Now, it becomes very clear.
If the question is, in the present moment, the answer is no. As you're conducting, you're you're responding in a mutual aid.
Correct.
Environment.
We were talking about the jointer and
Okay.
I asked if she would, they would continue to pay for that. And she says.
The draft I'd like to put together includes that because that has been the conversation.
Okay.
If they kick back, then that could be a negotiation piece.
Okay. All right. I'm just sharing because I told you I wanted to have the full picture. And so I trust her to to be straight with me. So apparently she's just not aware of what's being proposed.
That might be the case. I I the purpose of today is to have this conversation and make sure that I capture these things in a draft agreement that then goes to respective solicitors and insurance companies and then boards for review. So.
That goes for me, that goes to liability. And that's why I want to be sure that it's not hidden from anybody, not intentionally, but that they're they are aware of what is expected.
I have, yeah, I will. I will talk to my counterpart and make sure that he's aware of that concern.
All right.
This is a public meeting, so maybe she'll see it through this.
We can't count on that.
No, but I said, may. That you'll hear what the concerns are.
And like I said, the language will be included in the draft that I'm going to build. And, you know, that all all the commissioners would review that that draft just like this board and.
All you can be expected is to make them aware that that might be an issue and they need to communicate better if it is.
We've already started actively engaging public safety agencies in Lancaster County in hopes that if this agreement comes to fruition, that we can build some partnerships down there to help us. Got a lot of positive feedback so far, which is encouraging and that also mutually beneficial. You know, these agencies can help us for Lebanon County calls as well. You know, in the interest of making sure it's very clear that our intent or our intent is wrong way to say that. You know, our primary objective is always Lebanon County. We will make sure that we protect Lebanon County's response capabilities at all times. That means that we're never going to send everything to Lancaster County. We're always going to have response capabilities and personnel staying back in Lebanon. Lancaster County supplementing our staff is what makes this possible and Lancaster County partnerships. Lancaster County is going to cover any costs associated with preparing vehicles and and response capabilities that are specific to Lancaster County. So there's going to be no out of pocket expense for us. And, you know, just as the last bullet point I have on this list is that we're going to make sure that, because it's a big one. We're going to make sure that we spend quite a bit of time learning this through our respective insurance agencies and getting all feedback and addressing all concerns. So the next step for me is to hear any other feedback and try and get a draft agreement put together. Start working through the process. This point, questions or feedback? Don't take any consideration.
Well, again, in the interest of transparency, the other question I have is will the entire crew that was under the Lancaster independent kind of group in that substation, will that entire crew be coming on board with Lebanon?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay, because I, again, I didn't know if they were the ones covering the insurance for the other team members or.
I have not privy to all the details of what is happening.
Okay.
But I do know that there are discussions between Lancaster and that agency and we have been told at this point they're not a part of the equation.
They are not.
Like I say, the the my two, one big concern is to that we would lock ourselves into a long term agreement without the ability to to walk away if it in fact didn't work out. And I see that's at the top of your list there and that's addressed. That's my would have been my biggest concern. And as long as Matt, you know, reads the final language and, you know, that we we have that ability to walk away if in fact it doesn't, because it's always a an element of risk in anything you do that's different. But again, I go back to, I I think it's incumbent upon all of us to look at finding better ways to to do what we need to do to to protect our communities. And I think this is that's a very sound judgment on on your part and well put together.
And I, yeah, I will note, I was waiting until after the meeting today to reach out to my counterpart in Lancaster County to initiate the discussions to begin that process of working with their board through their solicitor so that we could exchange a draft agreement between the two of us that's acceptable to both of the boards, both both this board and at Lancaster County. The other thing too, I just wanted, and I don't take away from question time, but I'm I'm curious with regard to numbers, if you could maybe clarify the the number of people with Lebanon County, the number of people that would be assisting with from Lancaster County's end. And then if there if we're going to incorporate into the agreement a requirement that X number of people remain in Lebanon County at all times, I think that seems to be one of the things that is one of the maybe concerns that we want to address during the negotiation phases. What is it from a from an emergency services perspective, what would be an acceptable number to retain here at all times? In the event that something, you know, happens on seventy eight or eighty one.
That's dynamic.
Okay.
And there are. So on paper, we have how many twenty 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 rostered. But that doesn't mean twenty people are available. And that's where the operations chief is constantly monitoring that. So trying to define the exact number of people actually stay by my mind is probably not
Okay.
accurate way for us to ensure services in Lebanon County is more appropriate for you knowing who's available and this right, so kind of make that decision at the time.
And there's no, in looking at in looking at both the state statute and then in your reference, the federal, I said, the Sarah.
Sorry, well, yes, there.
The is there a minute there? I assume there's no minimum requirement for each county has to have a team and assigned team. That team could be two people, that team could be a hundred people. Is that is there a statute, do you know? That's something I could look into too, just to make sure it's ten. Okay.
Ten.
Okay. But that and that doesn't mean ten people per county.
It doesn't mean it doesn't mean ten technicians. It could be. So the only things that are required, positions required at a hazmat incident that is covered under one sixty five that is an incident commander and a safety officer.
Okay.
The functions of the hazmat team are risk based. And it all depends on what they are faced. And that will determine what level of responder is required.
Okay.
All of our, except for one member, two members are technicians, very dynamic. We do have mutual aid companies up here that assist us, that train with us. And we're, as the director said, building that capability in Lancaster if this goes forward.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Then it's.
Can you talk a little bit more about the current mutual aid agreements that we have in place? Because we have that exposure right now. If there's a major incident in Palmyra with a train derailment and all of our resources that we have are there, you know, and we may be drawing resources from other counties through mutual aid. And if something, you know, and a half an hour later happens in Newmanstown, we we have a limit and there are still other counties to respond. So that we're in that situation now and we help each other and that doesn't change in the future, correct?
It it doesn't change. And probably worth noting that, you know, us responding to Lancaster is not new. Under that mutual aid agreement, we've been doing that for years. And other other counties help us, we help other counties. There's no way to, there's no way to prepare for everything. And you do that through mutual aid, you you expand your abilities and and when you need additional manpower, highly trained manpower, call the next closest team. We've used Berks, we've used Dalton, we've used Lancaster. We have relationships with all of our neighbors and that'll continue.
Can you tell me how many, on an average year, how many calls for hazmat come in Lebanon County? How many come in Lancaster County?
On average for Lebanon County, it's what was last year thirty two?
Yeah.
Thirty two. It was as high as seventy six.
And what is the range at Lancaster?
Around the same, if not less. Actual the team dispatch calls where the team is required.
Seriously? That's hard to understand because of the double mileage, double population, et cetera, that they would have the same number as us.
This is the information that we're getting from Lancaster DPS.
Oh.
And it's, I mean, how many, we've done how many actual calls under mutual aid since? Since this?
Yeah.
Uh, one where the team, since in July, since July, one where the team was actually on scene and handled the call. There's been, the rest have been duty officer calls and three of those duty officer calls of where they've actually been on scene. And I think, Jason, if I'm not mistaken, two of those were by the Lancaster county person.
Yes. And how many in Lebanon County in that period?
Since July one. Were we at four, five, five actual team calls since?
Five, off the top of my head. I can get you accurate numbers, but. Yeah, if you would. I'm curious.
If I may, I do want to acknowledge and thank Bob for spending a lot of time with me, getting me to this point. Because there were so many questions. And, you know, I've still come up with some more as I've shared today. But you were courteous and I do want to acknowledge that you truly are trying to do a good job for Lebanon County. I just, for to support something, I have to be hundred percent educated as much as I can or as close to that hundred percent as I can so that I can try and make a good decision, at least from my perspective for Lebanon County as well. So thank you.
Hey Bob, back to that mutual agreement for one second. Explain why beyond the mutual agreement that currently exists, why there's a necessity to actually enter into this one year agreement that is aside from the mutual aid agreement.
So mutual aid is intended to be temporary. The whole purpose of it is to provide a service for a relatively short period of time to fill a void. So the obligation to have a hazmat team is on Lancaster County and that can't be satisfied through mutual aid alone. So the need for this agreement is to fill that obligation, that legal obligation.
Got you. I also have a couple others. Can I go ahead?
Go ahead.
Um, about the fee, is that a set fee for the year or is that a per call? Is that based on a per call fee and what that cost might incur?
Because it's still in negotiations, several pieces here. There is going to be some sort of a retainer that's included with this agreement as well as a program to recover costs that we can't collect for. So if we go down to a call, let's say the responsible party ran away, we have nobody to collect for. This agreement will be structured to make sure that Lancaster County makes us one, that we don't have any out of out of cost pocket, out of pocket cost for them. The fees for services though, that's we bill that to whoever caused the hazmat incident. Sure. And that could, as long as that individual pays, that covers all of our costs, all of them.
Right, yeah.
If they don't, that's when Lancaster County will step in and make sure that we're made whole.
So has the annual fee been determined yet?
No, it's not.
And then is the ninety day clause, is that reciprocal? Can they walk away as well?
Yes.
If they decide we want to back and hire somebody.
I could comment, again, I spent a good fifteen of my professional years at the hospital and my role was to coordinate physician contracts, about two hundred and fifty physicians in our community with insurance companies. And we'd like to structure agreements like this that were one year renewable, kind of makes both parties behave and make sure the other party is happy. Because you, you know, if if in fact we find the fees aren't adequate, you know, we give them a heads up near the near the renewal date to say, hey, unless we can address this, we're not going to be able to renew. So that's that's a a real good way to structure a agreement.
Do you have any concerns about with that two hour state requirement to be on site within two hours and Lancaster being so large as it is of getting to a site in two hours?
No. You know, it to get from here to the most southern point of Lancaster is about an hour. I I can't see, can't see any issues there. However, we will structure the agreement to allow us to utilize mutual aid if necessary. So if we're tied up on a call in Lebanon County, we reserve the right to basically call another hazmat team to cover our obligation in Lancaster County.
And the twenty people that Gary mentioned, is that that's Lebanon County people? The organization that was doing it, as you said, those people are out. And then how many existing Lancaster County hazmat employees, if they're actually, that's the terminology? How many would be available to respond? Like, how many may potentially come to Lebanon County realizing it's called?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that yet because I think this agreement will probably come with some sort of conversation on their side about who they're going to get trained and what that number could look like. For us, it's most beneficial having somebody there who's able to handle the day to day duty officer stuff. The full team responses are able to provide two people or five people, either is going to help. But we're going to rely more on the partnerships we're able to build with Lancaster County Public Safety Agencies.
Right. And we basically discussed, we reported, you talked about a two month temporary thing.
Yeah.
Are we looking at October first to maybe have this in place if possible? Or what's the time timeline look like?
We originally agreed to cover them under mutual aid with the goal of trying to have an agreement in place by September. That timeline's obviously been stretched a little bit. That agreement was more about making sure that there was progress and they and we weren't just doing this under mutual aid forever. October's probably realistic if if everything moves quickly.
Have an answer one way or the other.
Yeah. And, you know, feel free to chime in and correct me if I'm.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm going to start the conversation rather quickly with my counterpart in Lancaster County. And so this is something that I I think.
And so this is something that I, I think both counties are eager to get to a point where we at least, you know, I know you've had discussions with your counterpart. But I, I think now, after we've talked with the board, I think now it's, it's time we maybe formalize some of the things that you and, and the director of Lancaster County have, uh, have discussed already then, so.
If I'm hearing correctly, that means you're volunteering right the traffic. That should be okay.
That's right. I, yeah, that's right. I, I'm going to start the conversations with the, the Lancaster County Senator and we're going to see how it goes from there.
Sounds good.
Do you know for a fact if Clarion County was in a joint during the Southwest and pulled out? And if they did, why?
We have very little interaction with the western part of the state. Um, I have no idea. I didn't even know they were a part of the region, so.
Yeah, okay.
Matt, you have a question? Do you have any idea how, who's going to be in charge? I mean, are you guys going to have a commission with Lancaster as running hazmat? Are you guys going to be in charge?
Uh, we, we would be.
How is that structured?
So in charge is a, there are multiple different layers when it comes to in charge. So in charge of the call, as far as who's, who's in charge on the scene, that's us. As the, as the contractor, because if we're in some place, we are in charge of that scene. Um, the Lancaster County, L E P C is responsible for ensuring that, that there is hazmat coverage. Uh, and then Lancaster County EMA underneath our DPS is going to be.
When you want to define L E P C, you're throwing a bunch at them.
Yeah, sorry, local, uh, local emergency planning committee. Then Lancaster County EMA will, the, the emergency management coordinator is the one who has and then delegates the authority to dispatch a hazmat team. So we would be deriving that authority from that person at Lancaster EMA and that dispatch would be by protocol and they would have the right to change that protocol if necessary. So they would be in charge of when we go.
So how are you going to prioritize calls? Like, say if you were to get one from Lancaster and one for Lebanon, how would you distribute?
Uh, we have resources to cover both.
So if the call originates in Lancaster County, Lebanon County is still the chief on that call?
Yes.
Oh.
You, you look confused, Matt, sorry.
I am because there's, there's still a question in my mind about day-to-day and not just on the calls themselves, you know? Hiring, hiring personnel, maybe considering getting new equipment? Who, who would factor that? Would you have to come back to the?
Those counties, our, our team is Lebanon County's team, nothing's changing.
Right.
They're just contracting us to provide services. So any employees that we hire, any equipment that we purchase, that's all Lebanon County.
If, but if you need to purchase equipment from Lancaster, are you going to come to them and ask them to use it?
If Lancaster, if it's something that is Lancaster-specific, Lancaster is going to purchase it, they're going to own it, they're going to maintain it, they're going to allow us to use it.
So if Lancaster has their own personnel and their, their own equipment and you guys have your own equipment, you just sharing personnel?
Uh, yeah, essentially.
Well, I guess then my question is, you know, are you going to be hiring in Lancaster to fill any kind of quota or?
Not, that's not our role. Um, but if they decide that they want to hire people to help assist with this and that becomes part of the agreement, then they can do that. Um, but at this point, that has not been a part of the discussion.
This is, correct me if I'm wrong too, Bob, but this is analogous to situations where like, for example, union township contracts with Cleona Borough to provide for police services. The, the difference here is that strategically Lancaster County, as Lebanon and the other sixty-six counties are required to have a designated entity and it had been hazmat too, the private company in, in Lancaster County. Uh, so it's, it's very similar in that the, the structure of Lebanon County is remaining the same. It's just we, the, with regard to equipment, with regard to personnel, the, the discussion is just if something happens, we then respond and we are designated.
I understand, but in your analogy as well, you know, Palmyra and Anvil, you know, join their police departments, but they have a commission overseeing all of that. So I'm wondering who's overseeing hazmat?
That's a different thing. So they joined into a regional entity.
Right.
Joined a regional entity. We are Lebanon County Special Operations covering Lancaster County.
Yeah.
So like a service agreement.
Right.
If you don't mind that.
Go ahead.
I try to expand on your question maybe. So if there's attrition, which there has to be in the Lancaster ranks, who's, who's, uh, selecting replacements? Who's, uh, advertising if need be because, because you're, you know, you're going to be up here doing this thing. And I, I don't think it's just going to be, well, when the tones go, you go. There's a whole lot of administration that goes on in between. Are they going to maintain somebody that's going to continue to keep the ranks filled? Continue to recruit volunteer? Where's all that falling if that's answering Matt's question? Some of it, basically there's a lot of admin that goes with this.
Yes.
Who's doing that?
Yeah, we've, we're doing, so Lancaster employees are Lancaster employees. If, if they are being replaced by Lancaster, we're not a part of that. Um, if the agreement specifies that we're going to get the use of three employees, then that's what the agreement specifies. If it just says, the discussion at this point has been, it just says that Lancaster County employees um, that are hazmat technicians are permitted to, to assist us, to be a part of this, this team. Uh, and that Lancaster County will compensate them or do whatever needs to happen. So if those employees leave and they hire somebody else, that's, that's a Lancaster County issue. Um, there are no discussions of hiring hazmat dedicated employees through Lancaster County.
And this would be in one of those examples again, to why the agreement is structured the way it is. And if they're not acting in good faith to maintain appropriate complement of employees, it's, it's grounds to put them on notice to say, hey, you can't uh, fill these voids, then we're going to have to walk. But.
Yeah, um, I, I guess I'm still not a hundred percent clear. We have a hazmat fund when we collect amounts that go in to our fund. If you're billing for it, does it go into our fund or does it go into Lancaster? And how much is in Lancaster's? And, you know, is that going to dissipate and come into our fund or what's going on there?
We bill for it, it comes into us. Uh, we reimburse, Lancaster County has Lancaster County equipment on that call. We reimburse them at the task force rate for whatever we're able, whatever we're able to collect. And that goes into, I would assume there has a fund as well, but we're, we just cut the check to them at that point. That's.
We have no, no exposure, we're just a pass-through.
Right. So we're not retaining any of the funds you're billing for?
Every, we're retaining all of it except for what we bill for on their behalf. So if a Lancaster County-owned piece of equipment is on that call, we will bill at task force rates for that and then reimburse them.
So much a mile or something of that nature?
Uh, it's mileage plus hourly.
Mileage plus.
So let me, let me play that out. We're sitting here in twenty twenty-nine and in the fourth year of the agreement. And they have their, their response is ten or twenty percent of the total response in terms of the number, say there's ten that respond, just going to use numbers here to make it easy, okay?
Yeah.
Say ten go to the call. Eight of them are ours, two are theirs. So you're saying according to this, they get twenty percent of the, of the, the reimbursement for the call? So.
It, kind of.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. So how we do billing is, as the director mentioned, is the cost recovery with the task force. So we're billing for apparatus that responds on scene by hour by the time that they're dispatched. From the time that they're dispatched to the time that they're cleaned up and cleared and available, the, the clock's on for that apparatus to be built. So for example, we'll take it to Lebanon County. We have a call up on the interstate. Whatever apparatus responds from us, whether it's the squad or the rescue or both, we're billing for that. Whatever fire apparatus is up there that's assisting us, that requested us, or any other fire apparatus that is up on, up on the scene prior to us, once we're dispatched, we start billing for them also. Personnel-wise, our personnel by the hour are being billed. Um, equipment, whatever equipment that is allowable as far as consumables, we bill for. Um, so when, after the call is completed, uh, and, and all the paperwork's done, we start the billing process and we bill for all of that, all the resources that we use. When we get paid from that, what, what happens is, what I build for, let's say, engine ten, right? And we collect for engine ten, that gets passed on to engine ten. Whatever we use that is Lebanon County's, we retain. Plus there's, per the cost recovery with the task force, there's a fifteen percent administration fee that stays with us. And that covers things like the billing process, the collecting cross, and collection process, restocking, the report, right? All the stuff we can't bill for directly. So take that to now with Lancaster, which has happened before, both, on both ends. We go down there to assist them, they, in the past, they would bill with our, put our apparatus on their invoice, bill, collect, reimburse us. It's happened in the past with, with Lebanon County, with Lancaster County coming to us, we bill for their apparatus, we collect, we reimburse them what was collected for their apparatus. That would be the same thing that's going on. Nothing is changing with the cost recovery, the, the, the collection of the invoices and then the subsequent reimbursement.
Which I think is, is makes sense if, if that is a constant fifty-fifty. But, but let's say as time goes, Lancaster has less participation and we're doing an eighty-twenty response. And that's what the invoicing then ends up being. To me, at some point, Lancaster's resources, Lancaster's reimbursement was too low, could be, come, too low for them to maintain and replace equipment and inventories. Yes or no?
No, because the, the rate is based on what responds from them.
So. So are we, are we running down there and jumping in the seat, using their vehicle and then, and then billing for their vehicle? For them?
Right.
But then, but then we're so we're, we're, potentially we're operating their equipment and then we're billing on their behalf for their equipment.
But the personnel hours we bill.
Yeah.
For our personnel.
Okay.
So even if we, even if we invoice, even if we invoice for their equipment that was used, okay? There's still that administration fee that's on that.
Fifteen percent.
That comes to us.
Understand. I'm not worried about us in the short term.
Mm-hmm.
I'm more concerned about at some point which Lancaster doesn't have enough to keep up their end of the equipment and inventory and supply inventory because just as a practical matter, the less, the more times they don't have a team, probably the less participation they're going to have locally. And, and I'm just, maybe that's incorrect, but it seems logical to me. And so eventually, don't they run into where their, their revenue for calls has gone down to the point where they don't have enough to keep up? Or again, equipment and so on. We're, we're good. We got an extra, we're getting an extra fifteen percent.
For calls, yes, but that's not the only stream of revenue for their local emergency planning committee.
Okay.
It's also tier-two money. So they have a wider base to collect as far as tier-two money. And what that is, as you know, is the, we bill for every chemical that's on site. Plus we have, for those that have extremely hazardous substances, we have to build the right, the plan, because we have to have a plan for that. So that's revenue that, that's not even in play on our end here that they would have for their hazmat program.
And again, I'm going to go back to the point of that's why you structure it the way you do. So it's not a ten-year, we're locked in, you know, and you don't even set it for five or three. It's one year renewable, we're both.
I get that. I, and I appreciate that too, but we have, we have to, we have to be mindful of, before we get to that point, if we get to that point, that, that finances are one of it. One of those points where we say, wait a minute, this is, this is going to reach a point of, of, uh, you know, where potentially funds dry out. I understand. I appreciate that they are getting other sources of revenue. It's how we were able to get this most recent purchase for a truck. You're not just getting reimbursement, you're getting other funds that you can set aside and put toward capital. So I guess that's what I'm saying. Are they, you know, is, is there a point at which a few years down the road where because they don't have the full team that they're billing for? Do you under, do you probably?
You're going with it. Something I'll bring up to them because, you know, we don't.
The answer may be the county has to kick in.
My focus has been very much Lebanon County. Um, and I really haven't thought about stuff like that. You know, how, how they intend to maintain that.
Think about to, to, yeah, we can create language too.
Um, I made a note of it though and I'll discuss it with them and make sure that's on there.
Well, the ninety-day is the answer. We can say, with this, this, it looks like it's working on paper, we're out of here. Or Lancaster County Commissioners could say, hey, you know, we need to throw a half a million dollars into this fund because it has, it hasn't kept up. I mean, those are answers.
Right. It's something for them to be considering.
I do have another question. Um, you mentioned the nineteen ninety federal and state requirements for hazmat. Is there any difference between a class four county and a class three, which we will move into soon? Or I don't know if Lancaster is a three or two, but I know they're not a one. But whatever class they are with the different classes, are there different?
The short answer is no. And hazmat team is certified to one of three different levels in Pennsylvania. We're a type-two team, uh, which is the same thing that Lancaster County's team was. They don't scale based on county size. Um, they are a, they're certified to a functional level. With capability.
Capability.
Yeah. So uh, we are the same, potentially the same thing as what Lancaster had.
So beyond the coverage of these hazmat incidents, is the goal here to make a profit or just to be revenue neutral?
Uh, the goal here is to expand our abilities as well. So the additional manpower that we could get out of this for calls, the additional equipment that will be available for us will help Lebanon County as well. Uh, and we're going to make money off of this, which will help us sustain our program.
Everything, health and see levels would be stronger and, you know, things like that that you, you know, because of the frequency of calls, that's going to help.
It, it does. Um, and it brings in, this brings in new interest as well. Uh, new volunteers, uh, hopefully new pay staff, you know, it, it will help bolster our team.
Did you potentially, um, execute this sort of agreement with, say, Berks County or Schoolville County or something? Or is it just one county that you love?
So you could. We are, we are not at the point where we could take on more than one county. And five years from now, maybe. And maybe five years from now, this becomes more of a regional concept to where another county joins that, that regional program. And, you know, a regional model looks more like you still have your individual stations, but everybody specializes in something. So you're reducing overhead and distributing that footprint a little bit to capture more people. Um, that'd be beneficial for everybody. But there, there's lots of opportunity there. But right now, if, if somebody else came to us, I, I don't think it would pass our, the.
That's right.
We're not the only one in a regional concept where we're covering another county. Offing County covers Perry and Schoolville. Uh, York covers Adams. Cumberland County covers Franklin. So this isn't the first time that we're not writing a new book here. So we're just helping out, like Lancaster helped out, helped us out before, so. Uh, this is being done a little bit differently though.
Right, yeah.
Where it is much more in cooperation with Lancaster County and Lancaster County resources than those other agencies are. So, which we see as mutual beneficial.
Those are not by agreement? Franklin and Cumberland or the other by, by? How, how does this differ from those?
In that we're doing it more in cooperation with Lancaster County resources and assets and their DPS.
Oh.
Uh, versus just saying, we'll take care of it.
So Franklin has, has no team.
Correct.
Of, of Schoolville.
Schoolville County has.
Perry does and Perry.
So then they contract with another county team. What was another, I want, uh, Dolphin covers Perry and Cumberland.
Do they have, so they have agreements with, so Cumberland has an agreement with Franklin?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have those or are we getting those?
I can get them. Your for Adams.
I'll, I'll recheck it to my other partner.
Do, do you already have those or no?
No.
Well, before we, Matt, you do any of your legwork, you know, like again, we'll leave time for questions, but I would just like to propose again, we're not ready to make any kind of decision on this. That's going to depend on, that was always the detail, like can we structure an agreement that that, that addresses all these points and our, and, and if there's any others we need to address, but. But before Matt goes and does that legwork, is there anyone here, based on what we've heard so far, that is saying, stop, I don't like this idea, it's, you know, we didn't address enough, or can, can he proceed with doing his legwork to try to, try to work out a, a language that, that Matt could recommend to us?
Well, I would just like to say that I think communication upfront is expected. No matter what, because that hasn't been happening. And, um, I, I have to do an awful lot of legwork. And we are in, we're all in responding to if there's a disaster. Um, but I, I was curious, how many, do you, can you tell me where the most calls are to in both counties? For instance, RR's on seventy-two, eighty-one, three twenty-two?
Yeah, eighty-one, all eighty-one.
And what is, is it Route thirty in Lancaster, or where are the most calls for Lancaster County?
Uh, Turnpike's a different animal. Probably we have a direct answer for that, we can probably find out.
I can tell you where we responded before, um, just with, with them and covering in this, in this aspect. It's been, uh, where the Leola area, the New Holland area.
New Holland.
Uh, there's been times where it was just up in Elizabeth Town, there's times where it's over in Nacalico, so it's Raffo Township. So it's, it's spread out a bit.
What was the first one?
Uh, Leola.
Leola. And what routes are those? Are they connected, or?
Seventy, we take seventy-two down, it depends what it is, seventy-two, seven seventy-two, that, you know, it, there's route. I don't think there's one time that we were on Route thirty, or maybe there was one time we were on that Route thirty. But where we're positioned at, uh, with our station where our equipment is, it's an easy jump down seventy-two, we're in Lancaster County in.
Unless the Renaissance Fair is having an event.
There, you can, and, and we can, you know, up on the interstate, we can say it's going to be difficult to get to when there's an accident and shuts down the entire interstate. You know, it, it's, there's all these variables that, as the director said earlier, it's very tough to, to, uh, cover every single externality that could be out there. Um, but we do our best on the risk-based, uh, response model.
And you said not the Turnpike, who covers the Turnpike?
And their own private contractor, they have a private contractor. They tell us when it's an emergency, when it is, uh, going to leave the Turnpike, where is the possibility that it's going to leave the Turnpike, because the Turnpike is private property. You mean the incident, the incident's got to, say it's got to spill over.
Yes, yes.
Into the municipality, then, then yeah. If it threatens to leave their property, or it does leave their property, that's when we get it solved.
To answer Commissioner Prince's, um, question, a hundred percent in favor of proceeding with your, investigating this.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to echo, conceptually, I, I think it's, it's something we need to explore. Uh, and if we can find arrangements that's suitable, Matt, come to us, our nomination, I'm, I'm in favor of taking that next step.
I'm still learning, so I, I don't want to commit, I mean, you investigate all you want, but I, I still have to hear.
Uh, and we're not here asking for a yes to a contract or anything like that, I just want to make sure that, you know, we are addressing concerns, um, that we understand the concerns, and if you want to sit down with me again and spend more time going through this, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Commissioner, once I get the, I, I'll reach out to some of my counterparts.
Yeah, get some of those answers. That would be great help.
Yep. Any additional questions? This issue isn't finished, but we, again, I applaud you for bringing it forward. I think you're doing the right thing in that regard. If we can create an agreement that's, we think is mutually beneficial and, and limits our risk, uh, I think that's, that's a plus for the taxpayers.
Uh, our next step is going to be to get this draft agreement in concert with Matt. And, uh, once, once you guys are happy with it, we'll move through our insurance and make sure that they're happy with it. Same thing with my extra county's insurance, and then we'll get a draft to both respective boards to review. And, you know, there certainly could be changes that come as a result of that review, but at least we'll have something formal in front of you to, to have discussion on.
Any idea of the timeline?
In October.
Uh, my part and Matt's part is probably two weeks. I have no idea how long insurance could take. Maybe three.
And what happens with, again, you were in the September with the other agreement, you initially did this. Would it just continue into October, you'll just keep floating, or you don't, you don't have to sign or do anything, because it's, it's technically then still under mutual.
It's just a standard mutual aid agreement, yeah. Um, if at some point this, this became stale, I think we would have to notify Lancaster County that we can no longer continue to operate under mutual aid. But as long as there's foreboding, I think it's appropriate to keep doing what we're doing.
And thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.